Oh.
But she worked in kids. Twenty twelve. Strong test.
Oh, when I was in, I was in high school, like, it really.
You're kind of lame, man.
I say, if you don't see them, they're good.
Yeah.
They're good people.
Do you remember me? I went to touch waters.
Did you?
Do you remember me?
Goodbye. I. So I didn't graduate from. Oh. I'm.
Okay.
Want to check your devices? Make sure that they have been turned off on vibrate or on silent or the.
Yeah, yeah, I.
You, do you want to.
Presley for your.
You said twenty sixteen?
I don't know.
What? So, what, what, what's all, what year is it?
I will.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah. That's, oh, it's true.
That's so. Everything went down.
Oh, yeah.
So I throw it in.
The principal. Eight fifteen.
You know. Oh, who's it about? Oh, it was me.
He looked like Mr. Bean.
Huh? Mr. Bean? Oh, you mean like, okay, I know he's.
Fourth, two thousand twenty five, now called to order this third town Eatonville Regular Council Meeting. This is King, would you verify for him?
Yes, Councilman Matt.
Here.
Councilwoman Miranda.
Here.
Councilman Daniel.
Hello, King.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Chris.
And Mayor Gar.
Here. Um, before we stand for in the invocation, I need to make, make everyone aware, I forgot to do it in the last meeting. But because of some recent change, recent events in regards to separation of church and state. Um, we usually open up with invocation and pledge of allegiance. Tonight will be the last night that we open up with invocation. It will be a moment of silence or positive word. Um, so that being said tonight, invocation, pledge of allegiance. Please stay.
That's great. I probably, I'll be thank you again for another day of young things every episode for even my river choice. And be glad in it, be thankful for this privilege that you've got to move and have our being. Even for this town council meeting, which have allowed us to come to be educated and updated on the state and welfare of this hour community. We thank you for all the administration and those that represent this community professionally. As you continue to give them discretion and discernment to make decisions that will be beneficial and advantageous for this community. That will bring you glory and it's good. We thank you again for this town, uh, what you're doing in, through and for it. Glad that you continue to bless it and keep it. Uh, we actually now to continue to, uh, enlighten us concerning the state of the welfare of this community in this town council meeting this evening. We are, we thank you again for all the things that you're doing. We actually, in Jesus's name, that you might be honored. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law, I mean, I am a patriot of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, with liberty and justice. The next item on. Is it full of the agenda, but I do ask that, um. It is the approval with the movement of item number five down into council decision. And also there's a proclamation that I'll be reading tonight as well. With those two amendments, I move for. Approval of the agenda.
I'm sure.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Uh huh.
Aye, all opposed. The agenda has been. Approved. Proclamation for tonight is for a company that has been in our town for forty years. They're celebrating their fortieth year. Uh, they celebrated January twenty first. Two thousand twenty five, and that is three D tire company. So I would like to read a proclamation in honor of that celebration tonight in tonight's records. So proclamation office of the mayor, town of Eatonville, Florida, three D tire company, celebrating forty years of excellence in service. Whereas three D tire company was founded on January twenty first nineteen eighty five by Ernest Williams, an industry veteran. With forty years of experience in tire sales and distribution, taken from the initials of three sons, three D tire company. Set out to establish his presence within the tire industry, and whereas three D tires, a company built on faith, dedication and a commitment to service. And the historic town of Eatonville wishes to celebrate the three D tire company for its tireless service. And professional dedication to the residents of Eatonville and the many visitors who are loyal customers. And whereas on March nineteen eighty eight, three D tire establishes first central Florida retail location in historic town of Eatonville. Offering quality tires and auto services to the surrounding community and whereas three tire. Decided to further diversify its operations in nineteen ninety six by beginning its commercial tire division in Apopla, Florida. Offering fleet and industri- industrial tire services to municipal governments, businesses and independent owner operated companies. In and around the central Florida area and. Whereas three D tire company remains an industry leader and trusted source for quality business. And tire related services offering multiple tire brands, including Goodyear, Michelin. Bridgestone, Kelly Cooper, Humo and more, and whereas three tire. Company continues to pride itself on upholding family values, faith and the founding principles for which it has become known. Quality, dedication and a commitment to service, its motto is service is first. Whereas January twenty first, two thousand twenty five marks forty years of excellence in service with an impeccable reputation. In the tire industry as an industry leader, willing to embrace the changes, growth and need for quality customer service. And diversity and offering other tire related products and services. Now therefore be resolved that the town of Eatonville, Orange County, Florida, along with Mayor Angie Gardner. Vice Mayor Theo Washington, council members Rodney Daniels, Tara's Mac and Wanda Randolph, thus. Hereby recognize and celebrate three D tire company on forty years of service. And witness whereof, I have here unto, set my hands and cause the seal of the town of Eatonville, Florida. To be a fix this twenty third day of January twenty twenty five, Angie Gardner, Mayor attested by Veronica L. King, Town Clerk. And please, when you see Mr. Williams or one of the sons, please congratulate them as well as maybe go get some tires. The next item, we're ready for citizen participation.
Yes. We have. Here while the theory. I believe she has head out.
Good evening, Mayor Gardner, town members, audience. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, come on behalf of the association of the. And, uh, thank the town of Eatonville. Um, council and staff. Uh, for a successfully executed, uh, very successful. Uh, this, um, this past cycle. Uh, we need not just the outdoor festival, but the, uh, town of Eatonville. Under the leadership of Valerie Monday and with the cooperation of. Former Land Commission, uh, teams. Offered a training session, the world called to bears. Uh, Mayor Jerry Jennings, uh, amen, delivered a proclamation, the town, um. With hospital and offering lunch. Uh, want to acknowledge the, uh. The cooperation of faith community through the, uh, St. Lawrence African Methodist Church. And Macedonia Mission Baptist Church. Want to acknowledge the, um, onsite assistance, which he has done now for a couple of years of Mayor Eddie Cole. And, um, just generally, um, I think the whole operation. Um. What was a success, we will have our evaluation retreat virtually on March one. But I can tell you that from a variety of different sources. Um, as the younger people say, the vibe is good. And, um, they want to make the Zoro Festival great again.
Yes, thank you so much.
We have. Edward Cole.
Hi, Eddie Cole, five forty five East Street. I just wanna, uh, say, uh, thank you, council, uh, watching just the workshop and as we talked through the host time. Really appreciate it, I think after, at the end of the day, it's gonna be a win win for all of us, but thank y'all that it was just healthy dialogue and. And that we can see some great things come out, and I look forward to once the building is open. All the different things that can happen. At the building as well as for us, different things that we can do within our community. Thank you, uh, Mr. Uh, Manning for sticking, sticking around. And you know, you guys have years here, so we wanna really say thank you, and again, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, uh, uh. For all that time, Bill, thank you.
We have Kathy Mills.
Good evening, everyone, the council, mayor. My name is Kathy Mills, I live at three eighteen Greens End Street. When I can get there. The traffic is so bad, and I want everybody to know in and out. I've been living in Catalina Park for over forty years. I don't know the young group, the older group, there are a lot of cars in there. We even, we can't even get in and out the community without fighting to get in and out the community. So if we could get our police department, I'm not the only one feel this way. I need more people to come in and talk about it and be about it, but it always seems I'm the one. That have to speak up for Catalina, and I don't like that. But I'm here to say, if we can get our police department, sometimes they're parking in the roadblock, okay? I ran through that, if we can get these cars, I mean, they're on both sides of the world, we have to squeeze through. My car have already gotten scratched from one of the events before, with the truck on one side and the car on the other side. And I'm trying to get through. So please, if we can do something about. They don't live there. Lot of the cars that's in and out back on Greens End, they don't live back there. They're just there, they're fun and games or visit, but there is really. We have no place to park these cars that's coming in and out. So if we can get with the police department or. I don't wanna have to say, can Orange County come in and do something about it? But we are our town, we've got to do something about it and keep off the grass is not an option. Don't park on this, that's not an option. We've got to find a way. To be able to get in and out our community without fighting with our neighbors. I don't like fighting with the neighbors, I don't like arguing with them because it's my home. Catalina Park is where I live. And I enjoy there when I can enjoy there, but if we could do something, anything. Not just make promises, tonight is a good night, I was able to get out. Tonight is a good night, now going back in, I don't know. But we need help in Catalina as far as the mages drive in. And coming out, I mean, I can get out two ways, but sometimes both ways are blocked, then I'm blowing on my horn. I don't wanna do that, I shouldn't have to do that. After people don't live there, so if we can do something about it. Not just talk about it, but be about it, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Joyce.
Angela Johnson has brought herself about Kathy Mark's cars and stuff like that too. Um, settlers. Who founded this town, it was founded by incorporated by obviously the people that gave us. I'm sure they didn't go long, hello, um, one. They didn't go long, I'm sure, there were people who had cons, but they worked together still to see it to the end of the door. They were settlers. But I feel like. As municipality of Eatonville settles for so much less. And expects so much less of many of the people who work here. I heard you guys just get on him about this business, you know, we gotta do our jobs and personal stuff can't come into it. This is a personal toxic mix in many ways. I don't have to go on along with this, it's known all over the town and all over the state. And I remember asking everybody to use their highest invest selves in making decisions for the people. But in my opinion, which is all it is, you make decisions collectively for yourselves. And that doesn't mean everybody, that means on the vote of town. The decisions are quite often not for the people. We have. What I call three superstar women at least here, Ms. Cleveland, Ms. Monday and Ms. Katrina. Who without them, this town would cease to function. We also have an under a grotesquely underfunded police department, we keep hiring officers, we keep losing them because they make less money. Than you hire in the office, and that makes no sense. I share a bloodline with many young cousins who I cannot leave here alone to fight this battle. And in that bloodline. I also have discovered that there are descendants of the people who founded this town who deserve. Not to have generations of sacrifice squandered by personal issues. Of who you will and won't work with because you like them or you don't, or whatever you can work out with them. That really, if this is like a nine one one emergency, there's a wind blowing that none of us may see, but it's gonna blow us out of here if you don't do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last one.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval for the consent agenda.
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye, all opposed. All right, consent agenda has been approved, item five was moved to. Um, council decisions primarily because on item five for the host time project agreement. There was a request to change the completion date. From. April or whatever to July thirty first.
May.
Yeah, it was May.
And it's. Thirty first, right?
What I get, April?
It is, uh, that's the day four, it's, it's in there.
It's in it, okay.
Twenty second.
Okay. Before, from May fifteen, two thousand twenty five. To July thirty first, two thousand twenty five. Alright, so with that being. The change.
Also to eliminate the two hundred thousand dollars. That was the other thing y'all discussed, whether you do or not, that's, that was what you discussed.
Right.
And I would like, if I may, I would like to do that because if, if, if we wanna do it the right way. Then let's come up with a, a payment something if they don't make it pass, just to automatically jump to two hundred thousand, to me, seems unfair. It seem like you're trying to target to get some back, so if they don't make it pass July thirty first, there should be a penalty. Per week or day or something like that. And not just jump, if you don't make it, give us back the two hundred thousand. And attorney question for you, in the contract, have you seen the contract, is that?
Yeah.
Is that refundable, I mean, is that something that we can get back?
Well. There's, that's a loaded question in that. You can take the whole project, because they've been in default for so long, it's not even funded. As we all know, it's way past any deadline that was ever established, multiple times. So you already have that authority. The question of whether you could get the two hundred thousand back in order to get the extension is a negotiated item. Obviously, the alternative, if your host time is, if I say no, I don't get my extension and I'm in default and I'm in a real world of hurt. So you have leverage, the question is, do you wanna use it? What I understood from the discussion is you don't really want to, at least not yet. So could you then say? Again, because it's a two party agreement, he's gotta agree to it, that, okay, after the thirty first, we're having a penalty of. Two thousand a week, five thousand a week, whatever, some number. And it's initially negotiated right here on the fly. He says yes, it goes in the agreement, everybody signs the amendment, we go. But I don't know what the numbers will be, but yes, you can do that.
If I can take it back on.
Before we, Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah.
Discussing second. Um, so is there a.
Clarity where, where the, the motion is where the. July thirty first extension without the two hundred thousand dollar, uh, penalty. That's what I was before you doing that, that's wanna make sure that's what was being seconded.
And if that gets voted on, then we're done with the amendment. So if you wanna consider, instead of no penalty, changing it to no penalty now for the extension. But after that date, the penalty, that's a different discussion that you need to have.
Right.
So I just wanna give clarity, so before you make that second, what they're seconding.
Okay, so you've heard the amendment, is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, councilman.
Yeah, so like, like, um, I said before, just picking back on what, um, council member, um, Danny said. I'm, I'm here to help, um, any business out in any way I could, in any capacity, um, especially when they are doing something. That's gonna be for the betterment of the community, so I'm definitely in favor of, um. Giving you the opportunity to get this project done, um, by July third first, but like I stated before. From a business perspective, because this is a business, right, that we're running, and I wanna make sure that we're down our eyes and crossing our t's on every event. Now, I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt, and I'm optimistic that you can get it done because I've had personal conversations with you as well. And, you know, I'm eager for you to get it done as well, and I know you are, because I know, um, or the backlash that you suffered. Throughout the duration of this, but at the same time, my job as a legislator and as someone that make tough decisions up here. Is make sure that I put your feet to the fire, and I'm not undermining you by any chance, I just wanna make sure that we're getting this. Across to you that we, we gotta get this project done. And, and, and all respect to you, and like I said before, I appreciate you coming to our community. And wanna build and wanna construct and wanna do things that's gonna be sensible and for the betterment of the entire town of Eatonville, you know, so, um, with that being said. I'm definitely in favor of not, um, looking for the two hundred thousand dollars if you don't meet the criteria, but moving forward. There will be penalties and, you know, sit downs that we will discuss, but I'm hoping. And like I said before, I'm optimistic that you're gonna have this project done, um, no later than, um, July thirty first, alright, so.
And, and I, if, if we don't have the penalty, why haven't you paid that? Why have you agreed with?
That's just my opinion, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, I'm gonna vote my convention on how I wanna do it, um. Like I said before, I'm, I'm, I'm here to help people as well, but at the same time, my philosophy has always been helping people and changing lives. And I know with this particular, um, construction that's been going on, and, and he can tell you. Uh, I, I, I haven't been in favor of doing anything to, um, give anybody an extension, but I do have a heart. You know, and I vote my convention on the man upstairs, he the one that count my blessings and high vote, and I'm just being honest with you. And I'm, 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 I'm sitting here as sincerely as possible to, um, lay my platform down and say, listen. You know what you gotta do. You know what you gotta do from a business perspective.
Yeah.
Alright.
Can I ask, can I say something?
We gotta get to the pole and just.
Yes, I appreciate that, councilman, um, and listen, if. Barring, I'm, we're open to doing a penalty beyond the thirty first, I think that's reasonable, you know, you know, barring, we're not causing the delay. That, I think that also needs to be some clarity, but what I ask is, you know, and I appreciate, uh, Councilman Daniel saying. At this time, to me, it seems reasonable to give this one last extension, beyond that, it's a separate. Agreement negotiation, which I understand both sides, you know. Um, you know, I think to drop that two hundred thousand, and it's not just, I don't know, where, it's just like, you know, you know, below. I do think beyond the thirty first, it's reasonable to, to, to do a penalty, you know, barring, it's. You know, something that we did not pause, which could be drafted, you know, but I'm in agreement, uh, I appreciate the consideration.
And if I may, and finishing, this would be my, don't, now you can, you can have a seat, I just wanna express this right here, and, and if you can. I know there's no stipulations within the contract or agreement that we got, but just in good faith. If you can come here on a regular basis and kinda like give us. An insight on what's going on with the project, hey, listen, I'm to this point, we're just about, you know, getting to this point to where we can really finish things up. Because I want you to finish this project, I, I, I wanna be able to help you, I wanna be able to help you help yourself, you understand me? So if you can come and give us, you know, visits, whether you're emailing us or saying that you're gonna be here at the next council meeting. Et cetera, et cetera, just give us some insight, you know what I'm saying, don't stay away and having us puzzled on what's going on. Because I think that's where the frustration becomes, you know, with any council member that sits up here, so. On a professional level, I think we just need to make sure that we're doing all those manners to make sure that we're moving forward, we're helping each other out, basically. Alright, and then like, uh, Mayor said before, everything's about respect, you know what I'm saying, we hold the highest office in this town, you know what I'm saying? And if you can't email us or, you know, give us some kinda appropriation on what you're doing, shame on us. Seriously, shame on us, and like I said before, I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire, you know what I'm saying, but in good standing though. You know what I'm saying, not to punish, not to undermine you or anything like that, but I'm gonna make sure that you're doing your job, so I wanna make, make you to make sure. That your people that are actually working for you doing their job as well, because I got a job, alright, that's it.
Councilman Daniels.
Yeah, or a representative. You don't have to come personally, just a representative, if you wanted to say so, because I know you're busy.
That's fine.
Someone from hosting, just come in.
Yeah, that's fine.
And you can't just, the, the, the standard of dealing with business, like what would be an, an average. You know, just a company or something, I don't think, I think it's gonna be done, you know, just the, 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 uh, standards of doing business if you don't. But I think we, 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 I think we're good, just me personally.
So what I understand is July thirty first, two thousand twenty five, at five o'clock, if there is no CO, then what happens? We have to come back here and vote on this again?
Okay.
Not necessarily, it's in default. So you can pursue with that, or you can choose.
Me to terminate the agreement, but I'm not sure where that gets you, because that's right now, he's in construction, he has to finish. And there's nothing that we can do to stop him from finishing, except not give him a CO, which if he qualifies for, he's gonna get it. So this is really your only. Only, uh, key in this whole deal.
Yes.
What you could say, however, and this is what I was trying to get at. Points one and two, i.e. seven thirty, one twenty five, and no penalty now, I think I heard that there's a consensus on that. Not everybody's in agreement, but I think I, I can count to thirty. So the question is, if you want to say after that, to provide incentive to make sure he gets to that day. That a penalty, instead of becoming immediately two hundred thousand dollars, but will be a certain amount a day, a week, a month. I need to know the amount and the period of time it would be, is it per week, per month, uh, per day? What is it, and then we can put it in this amendment, because we're gonna have to change the amendment, what's in front of you is gonna have to be changed. Based on what you agree to right now, and since he's here and you're here, this would be the time. If you wanna have it back, by the time you have another meeting after seven thirty one and then have the discussion, well, how much time before he's in the fall, well, he's already. So we should, you should bring a check, you understand what I'm saying, so now is the time, if you're going to do that.
And that is my point. If we're right here right now, if we're saying July thirty first, two thousand twenty five is it, and after that, there is a penalty, why are we not saying that now? So if, and, and I, and I think that if you're gonna give the. And and I, and I think that if you're gonna give the extension. There's, why are we graduating it? I mean, two hundred thousand dollars, there's already been a seven month. A seven month delay from the last. Deadline, I mean, nothing happened. We're gonna be in the same boat unless there is a penalty. And we're gonna be in the same boat. I'm asking that we that we fix it right now.
Well.
That if it doesn't, that if you give the extension to July thirty first, two thousand twenty five, that. We say what then will happen? Just what, um, Attorney.
Okay, now, if, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, the penalty would be a thousand dollars. No, 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 just a thousand dollars. That's it. That's mine, just a thousand dollars, and that's it.
Now, I know, now I know generally, and you know, in, you know, in the business, um, typically. Whenever you're doing construction and, um, you're not done in a timely manner, you know, it's it's a lot of. Stipulations on the 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 amount of fees, because I've been associated with, you know. People that have built and then finished in a timely manner. The stipulation that they have to go through, they they got, they they hire more people. That's how fast they want to get it done, because they know the stipulations behind it in terms of fees and, you know. Things of that nature right there that could really be costly, and I know influ-, you know, you know, it it's been a hard time. Especially during the COVID year when you was actually, you know, building. Um, it's been tough for everybody, you know what I'm saying? But. At the same time, though, I I guess what this penalty is saying, we gotta put some kind of stipulations in place. To so we'll hold your account.
One moment, one moment.
We got a motion on the floor.
Right now, this. This agreement. Says if it's not done by July thirty first, two thousand twenty five. There is no penalty of two hundred thousand dollars if we approve it right now, and that means what? There there's nothing. We're not gonna take that building back. We know that we're not. So what is, what, what is the impetus to finish the building? There there's nothing here. We should at least leave it there, give the extension, but leave the penalty. You're still getting the extension. That July thirty first is the date that we were just given. So we were just given the date of July thirty first. Then if it's not done, the two hundred thousand comes back to the town. I'm not asking. Any more money, and if you want to say two hundred thousand dollars, come back to the town. You know, by December, I, it doesn't matter, but let's not walk away without a penalty.
No.
Let's at least do that. That's us all on that.
Alright, listen, like I said, we got a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, probably seconded.
Yes.
Could you speak? Would you want to speak, or we can, you know, like I said, that's why we have workshops.
There's a big disconnect though, the delays. I feel like I'm being. You know, victimized for the delays, like, I didn't. Cause the pandemic, I didn't cause the supply chain, I didn't cause the water pressure issue, I didn't cause the H A to change. Why am I not being heard on that? I am, I didn't cause that.
I'm not, you you're looking at me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak. I'm not blaming you. But there was a time, it was, it was been done before the pandemic, so we can't blame everything on, wait, let me finish. We can't blame everything on the pandemic. The time to have been completed was two thousand nineteen. And if there were problems then, then it should have been communicated. All I'm saying is. This. Contract, the initial contract. There were stipulations to it that weren't followed. Then when it was for the permitting, we 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 gave grace then, because. You didn't have to pay the permitting all at one time, if you remember, that was in installments. So it's not like we have not worked with you. The town does not have two hundred thousand dollars. You know, and have the building been finished in two thousand nineteen, they would say two thousand, um, twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. We've been getting. We have those funds. For, so we lost, the town lost on revenue as well, tax revenue that would have been there had the building been done. Five years. So. Not your fault, but not our fault either. But I I think walking away right now, we're gonna be right back to the same. The same place if we don't bring this to a head right now and be done with it.
I I think that there's another extension beyond that. I think. You know, we can create another agreement that says, because of this extension now, this is what, I think that's, that's reasonable, um.
So so two options, I think that may help, um, with that. I I've looked up several, uh. Penalties, options from different municipal governments. Some are five hundred a day, some are a thousand a day, it it could vary, it just depends on the nature of the project. Uh, but if if we're, if we're looking to put something in there while we're here now and adjusting or amending this. Uh, we could consider, uh, the five hundred a day. Pending, uh, there is within thirty days of the completion, or thirty days of the thirty first. There's not been any, you know, restraints from our side holding, I mean, we can write us something to address the concern. Uh, if if it's something on our side that's holding up, then of course we can't penalize it in this period for it, but if there's nothing. You know, that if he gives back to us with verbiage stating, hey, we identified something such, this is thirty days prior. What I'm, what I'm saying is before the thirty first, thirty days prior, he's communicated. That there will be an adjustment, then that gives the council another chance to kind of communicate on how they would like to proceed at that point. I'm just trying to find a helpful medium where we can give a recommendation.
Reasonable, because I'm concerned with a blank here.
Wait.
X Y Z, because it's like, what, what if I don't call the delay, like, I'm exposed.
Okay. It's not like, it's not blanket for me, it's two hundred thousand.
I understand what you're saying.
It's not blanket. I I think that right now, if you're gonna give the extension, keep the penalty.
Well, I've heard two, so we've heard yours, but then we also heard a thousand dollars, and that's what I'm trying to say. I know, that's why I said the daily.
No, no, I think, like, I I totally agree with you, and I appreciate, you know, your expertise and looking that up, the information, because it's 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 much granted. Thank you so much. That's why these, that's why you're the CEO. You understand me? Now, with that being said. That, I feel like it does have to be some kind of. You know, penal, you know, penalty, if you're not to that point of completion. By the thirty first, and I think you can probably agree with that also, you know what I'm saying? But like I told you before, earlier in the meeting. I'm optimistic that you'll be done and completed with this. Construction. I'm I'm optimistic that that'll happen. Now, we we're talking about five months, right? Actually over five months. Because we, it's only the fourth now, so we're talking about five months and twenty seven days that you have to complete this, um, project, and. I I I think you can get it done. Now, what we do want to do is be fair across the board. Now, if you don't have it completed. We can put stipulations of five hundred a day, a thousand a day, and I think that's gonna make you. Be a little bit more, you know. Attentive to getting this thing done, because you know if you don't have it done within that timeframe, it's it it it's gonna cost you. You know what I'm saying? But I do want to be fair across, but I don't want to sit here and just say two hundred thousand dollars, because that is. Um, even though we gave it to you. I didn't vote to give it to you, I can tell you that for sure, you know what I'm saying? Because you wouldn't have had it from the beginning. But with that being said, I say that and say this. It's gotta be some kind of penalty. If it's gonna be fair, you know, across the board, whether it's, you know, um. A thousand dollars a day, whether it's five hundred dollars a day. And I think with that being said, Manny, you being a, um, being as professional as you are. It is really gonna limit you to, you know, saying, um, really get that thing done also. So do you think that's fair? Like, I want to ask you.
I think that's fair, because let's just say hypothetically, right? It's gonna take ten days beyond the thirty first. I'd rather pay more crews to work on site faster than pay that. I don't think five hundred is reasonable. I think a hundred dollars a day is reasonable, but I I do want to make sure that we add a clause that says. You know, if if it's caused by host time. Ninety percent of the delays have not been caused by us, and I I and I, if it's. I, and I like, I like what Dimitri said, I think it needs to be well documented. Thirty days in advance, you know, this is the constraint, this is the cause of it. It's documented. Should we need the thirty first? Because I'm with you, like, I'm willing to put skin in the game. Because I believe in in our team's ability to finally finish without the constraints. But barring something out of my control, and that's something that I caused, I don't think it's fair now. I I like, I I'm fine, and I'm, I want to solve this right now. I don't want to go back. I'm, I'm in agreement. I think it's, it's reasonable, a hundred dollars a day beyond the thirty first. With a thirty day notice of a constraint that's not caused by us to extent.
So you know this part clearly, when we started struggling with the, and this goes back to June. The conversation was, or the communication was reached out to Mr. Manning after that date was passed. I believe it was a month later that the actual stop work order was put into place. And that was something beyond Mr. Manning's control. After that point. We worked with our planning department to try to figure out how we resolved that. That took several months. Uh, in October, I think we had finally got everything worked out. I met with Mr. Manning along with Mr. Coman. I asked, hey, I need you to write down me a schedule. Of what it would take to get to completion. This document that I shared with you all several month, uh, back in December, when we finally started getting there, he gave me that timeframe. So what I'm, what I'm trying to be clear on is, you know, after we knew all the holdups. I asked Mr. Manning to give us an actual timeframe. That timeframe was April. Roughly April thirtieth, May first of completion, you know, at that point. Everything was still working. So what I'm trying to get to is, none of this is being, you know, even with the face that we're saying, July thirty first. The timeframe was given here, and I'm I'm trying to be very fair, so. To go to a hundred dollars a day, I don't think that's realistic, uh, to really hold an individual to something. If we, if you want to say five hundred, a thousand is is probably on the high end. Uh, if if we're wanting to find a median, two fifty. I'm I'm trying to work with you, but I'm just trying to say, don't, this is not as though. We haven't came to Mr. Manning and said, hey, we need you to give us a schedule that will work. Um, in the documents of the amended agreement, we can make sure it stipulates that thirty days. Uh, of the thirty first, that communication has come from Mr. Manning, pending there is no. Uh, uh, obstructions from the town or any of those on our side that have withheld it up. You'll be liable for after the thirty first, if it is not complete, to start paying that daily fine of whatever that amount is, whether it's a hundred dollars, two fifty, five hundred. I need the council to decide on that amount.
Okay, I'm sorry, man.
But no, I was, I was asking.
Okay, I'll stop order. What's the stop order?
So we discussed that in the workshop. It was mainly because of, uh, the the water lift, the lift station, and then it was also because of the pressure. Uh, that was something that had to be figured out with the fire department. Uh, certain of the standards that, uh, Mr. Manning pursued did not match what the fire, uh, marshal required. Solely because originally when they produced this information, Maitland Fire was servicing the town, and when this was done. It had been an agreement switched over to Orange County Fire, and so there was some, some. Lack of communications in between and expectations from one municipal government to another, one of them, so that's where it held it up.
So the blame game is on who? Manny or Tom?
I I would say it's it's on us, it's on the town.
Water pressure is a, a time issue?
Yeah, I'm just saying in regard, in regard. I'm I'm saying in regards to the communication, we have to communicate. Now, once, I I can't speak of, because even with that part, that happened before I got here. We knew about it, we we were trying to figure out what was the cause of why the delay, why they did the stop work order, and we found out. Stipulation that when he originally done it, he did respects to what Maitland Fire requires versus what Orange County. And so he had to go back and do all those adjustments there, and that's where the delay came. Once all that was cleared. There was a letter written from me to Orange County Fire stating. We will permit this to proceed, because all of that had been meant through C P H, which our engineer record. They reviewed these documents along with our planning department, discussed, discussed to make sure everything, uh, met the standards, and then they were able to release that work order. Uh, stop work orders for them to proceed with the work.
Okay, I like your idea, uh, Mr. Presley, uh, the completion date. July thirty first. And, um, and so I had mentioned about two hundred and fifty dollars a day penalty after that point. But at some point, we need to set a date that, um, Mr. Manning can come forward and bring us an update. At least thirty or forty five days, maybe thirty days, prior to the end of July thirty first, as to where we are on the project.
I agree.
We can estimate from that point whether or not, uh, it's gonna be a penalty. But I think for now, based upon all the circumstances and the factors that you had mentioned. I think the two hundred and fifty dollars, to me, would be reasonable at this point.
And I, uh, and I, I could, um, because I think it's fair across the board, uh, with me halfway. We know you're doing business in the town, um, I want to make sure that you're okay. And like you stated before, I got a family too, man, so I know how to, you know, you you got a family, you 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 you're running your business, and you're trying to conduct everything else. So, um, I'm all about being fair across the board. Now, my my thing is, and and like I said, maybe you don't have to pay anything. Maybe you'll be complete and 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 it's all go away, and we have, we have a ribbon curtain that, um, go inside the building. Which is something that's gonna happen regardless, right? And like I stated before, earlier, we appreciate you coming over here, you understand me? But we do. Have to legislate and 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 make business in the time being, because that's our job, you know what I'm saying? That's what I was sworn in to do. To, you know, protect this town. So two fifty, I think, is totally, um, agreed upon. And, um, we can appreciate you bringing that to the table and kind of like laying it out, because a lot of people. That is sitting up here wasn't sitting up here during the time you were constructing, but I was. So I know the significance of everything that you've gone through, um, and all the backlash and everything that you had to, you know what I'm saying, endure, so. I'm a little bit more lenient on being fair across the board with doing the two fifty.
And alright, and I appreciate that, because, you know, I have cost to the town that the town costs. I just want to say that, like. I'm I'm I I want to do that, like, to me is bigger than that. But I understand the town needs leverage, but I do want to make it clear that the town has caused delay that has cost me a lot of money. So just be aware of it.
Who's no delay?
We we discussed that too. And 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 I was dealing with, but I was just expressing, there was about a hundred eighty thousand dollars that he had to incur. To rewrite the plans that have to be submitted to Orange County. For for clarity, just so when you, when you make your vote, Cliff, do you have everything you need to adjust the amendment?
By since the thirty one twenty five, no penalty until after seven thirty one. After which it'll be two fifty per day, until the C O is issued with an update. Be brought to the council by some representative of, uh, Mr. Rivera's company, uh, thirty days before that date.
So right now, we we're talking about two hundred thousand dollars, right? If it's a one thousand dollar fine per day, that's two hundred days. Right, that's eight months, am I right? But that's eight months, it's not giving an eight month extension. If it's two hundred and fifty dollars per day, that's twenty six months. Why don't we just give it twenty six month extension? Because you're talking about two hundred thousand. If you, if you look at twenty six dollars, two hundred sixty dollars, two hundred fifty dollars per day fine. Right? Because if we're comparing two hundred thousand dollar fee, right? Two hundred thousand dollar fee versus a two hundred fifty dollar daily fine. That was twenty six months. If, if, if you look at it that way. You could pay the two hundred sixty dollar fee and work it out. Twenty six months, a thousand dollar a day, that's two, that's still eight months. You know, I think for everything that we've said about giving money down there, giving money wherever, that now we're. We we can make a difference, and and we're not, we're not even asking for a hundred thousand. We're not even, we're we're not asking for any of it. And I I just, I mean, you, again, you vote like, you know, vote however, but. I I think that we have an opportunity to, uh. To do right. We we are not in violation of any contract. We're not. We haven't done anything wrong. But but we are, we are. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go. So the motion is on the floor. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, next. The motion grants that the extension is done until July thirty first, two thousand twenty five, uh, with no. With no fee? Did we just?
We made no for two hundred and fifty dollars a day. So that's, that's, I think that's pretty significant.
Yeah, but prior to finish, I'll make sure myself and Cliff will send it over and clarify.
I think this conversation needs to be aired now, because what he said was not caused by host time. What about host time?
What he said was not caused by those time. What about those times contractor that he hired? What about the people who work for him who don't show up? What about all of that? Here's the thing that nobody has talked about. Have projects been completed in this town since two thousand nineteen despite everything? And the answer is, yes, they have.
What project of this significance though?
Uh, those apartments?
Not the same.
We move on. Alright, is, uh.
There was an error in the, um, citizen participation. There was another form that was hidden. That was brought to my attention. I wanna bring it to your attention, see if you would allow this citizen to make our answer.
You, you had it.
There was a form that was. You have Angela.
Angela Thomas, I'm being arrested. Question is just come for you to think the for us to think about. With, um, the president's apologizing all these federal grants. And putting them all whole, does that affect our monies that we're gonna receive for the things that we're gonna do? And even though I do love Kevin apart, just the West Side, but is it possible that? You know, that building that's right there beside this swimming pool is for sale. Can we use part of that two million dollars and buy that and maybe fix up that area? But that was just some of the things I was thinking about as well as, uh, they did say they were doing things around the lake. But we have a deck over, uh, is that a deck or whatever you wanna call it over there? So is there anything? With the funding we have for that. I don't expect to answer, but that would just some of the things that I was thinking. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh, Mayor Council. Just a few updates, uh, just so you know, as those consent agenda items was approved, they, those are very significant items. That we are now moving forward with. One is having, uh, the program manager, uh, with G C I that will help us to, uh. Program out the, uh, S R F funding. Uh, you know, along with that, the mayor will be initiating the, uh, their economic initiative program. To work to get local, uh, contractors involved that may wanna be involved with those items. Uh, the other part that may come up, just, just so we're clear on that, is the mutual aid on. Local volunteer corporation, uh, mutual aid agreement for the police department. That was approved. That's another one that's there. And then lastly, uh, in regards to the C D B G funding D R, um, we are submitting that, uh. Out of the two hundred and nineteen or two hundred ninety one million that's there, that's just fifteen we're going after. There are some other projects that we will. Uh, potentially proceed for with as they come available. Uh, to give some clarity on some of that, we'd have received those comments regarding the federal grants. Uh, everything at this point is still, uh, in standing and on point. Uh, but we are working now with the new staffing that's coming in. We have a meeting coming up on February twentieth. Uh, with the new, uh, uh, department and representatives to find out the new status of that. Um, regarding the, uh. Other projects, there was the FEMA dollars that we had, uh, submitted for reimbursement. We've finally regained the. Uh, the check off list done for them and we will be receiving the reimbursement from the FEMA dollars from him. Uh, in approximately ninety one thousand dollars. Uh, so that'd be, uh, utilized at Denton Johnson Post Office. And Town Hall and a few other little sites that were, I would give those. Uh, we also are working on currently on the audit. I wanted to position or request the date. For a strategic planning session in late March, early April, um, on a. Uh, potentially a Saturday morning with you all, uh, that would take about four hours. Is that good or you prefer to do it on? And just come in at five thirty? Or come in earlier, okay. Alright, so I'll, I'll position that. We'll set the time for the strategic plan session to cover. Uh, and then also, um, we're currently working with, uh. The I T department to review some upgrades. We, we're trying to go from the, the Gmail system to the. Microsoft so that, um, so that download will be taking place sometime in March. Uh, so that's what our I T department, so the change of that. Just some other news, just keep you updated. Admin system, which is our electronic system. We have completed the, uh, integration. So now we're in stages of actually implementing that. So very soon permits. Uh, code enforcement, uh, rentals will all be electronically, uh, available for payments as well as. Um, for approvals on our permits as well. So we're, we're looking to have that launched pretty soon. So that was a. A pretty significant change, uh, to bring us up to, uh, some of the current standards of municipal government with that. Uh, we had a very good, uh, stakeholders meeting on February, the eleventh at. Five thirty is a Duke Energy Home Savings Program that will be, um. Introduced to the community from Duke Energy on that day at the Denton Johnson. Uh, this program for the energy savings program with up to twenty different, uh, potential. Uh, improvements to a, a location is going to be available at no cost to the residents. So if you're a resident of Eatonville and you're in the corridor, which we had presented a while back, uh, two weeks ago. That neighborhood energy savings program is gonna be available for that. So again, those dates. Uh, for the meeting, I wanna make sure I give you the right dates, uh, for that. Yes, February eleventh from six to seven thirty at the Denton Johnson's, uh, community center. So that's for every resident that's within that corridor and it's pred- pred- predominantly all of Eatonville, all cores, uh, residential areas for that. So that, that's gonna be developed for that. It's gonna make sure the councils aware of that. Uh, we had another good, successful, um. Stakeholders meeting as well as the second master plan meeting. Uh, we are on pace to, to have some early drafts of that master plan in April. Uh, so as we're continuing those meeting, want the community stay involved in those meetings and continue to, uh, go on to the website. Invision Eatonville, uh, dot com. Invision Eatonville dot com to give their inputs and follow through the timeline of that progress that. Uh, staffing wise, uh, every, everything seems to be coming along. We, we have a few meetings. I will say this regarding Zora, or Zora, Zora met all of their obligations, uh, in regards to financial. However, there was some logistics and operation things that I would love to discuss for next year that needs to be changed. Uh, and I've already started to put together some items for P D and for Public Works to address. Uh, due to, uh, the impact of that event and, uh, not meeting some of the standards based on that. There's a lot to close down. Um, uh, West Kennedy or East Kennedy for this event and a lot of diversion at a cost that is not being considered. And what's taking place and that the numbers that are, that for that event that we're seeing, uh, there's some other options that we may need to consider. Uh, for our town for that. Just wanted to be very clear on that. Uh, everything's taken care of. However, there's some logistics and operations things that town need to really reconsider as we move forward in agreements with Zora. Uh, with that, I'll close and I'll take any questions that council may have.
The last meeting, we had you right here. Uh, and that's one of the things that I want to give information to you. On, uh, Zora, I was told to see Mr. President. And I'll see you.
Yes, I, I have the, the layout from that information and be more than happy to go down with the ground.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wish I could give you an update on Hungerford, but I don't have one, cause I haven't heard anything from our school board. Or I guess our new school board representative. I don't know if Mr. President's heard anything. We were told that if things were gonna happen, it would be January, February, well, February, so. I'm hoping that that means we're gonna have something happen, but I think, and I'm not sure whether it should be me, I'm happy for it to be me. But somebody should probably reach out and just ask what's happening.
Yeah, we, we've been having meetings with the board members. Uh, they were waiting on that thirty day, uh, period af- for any appeals to come after the dismissal. Is what we were told. And so, and so in that timeframe, you've still been meeting with the board members. I think we have two more coming up. Uh, in the coming weeks.
That's all I have.
Alright, Councilor Randall.
Okay, I, I understand what, I have a few things. But before me, we have something here pertaining to the police department. We didn't discuss this tonight.
Yes, we did. That was in the consent agenda. That's why, that's why I brought it just up since.
Uh, I do have something that I, is, is still on my shoulders. Um, but first of all, I'm going to, I've already got my answer on the Zora class, which I will get information from you, Mr. President. I'm still waiting for the logo. I've been, uh, told several times this to be done. And the last attorney that was here from Mr. Shepherd's office, he says that he thought that was sent over already. So I don't know what's the holdup on that. Like to try to get that going as soon as possible by the next meeting.
On December fifth, when that was brought to our attention about the logo, there was a memo prepared by our attorney's office that was submitted to you. Uh, on June that we were waiting for direction on how you would like to proceed with it. I can forward you that again, just so you know. But we need further information from council before we can present it back.
Thank you for that, Tony, please. Thank you. Okay, and, um, Miss Catherine Mills concerned about parking on the grass. Uh, it is a problem, uh, in Kevin the park. I've been down there several times and. You know, the streets, it's not that much leverage between the cars trying to get through there. So that is something that needs to be taken care of. Uh, but the, the issue here that I have here is on my shoulders. Um, I have to address this because I think I did address it in the last meeting or the meeting before. The response I got from you on the formal notice about those incidents. And I just wanna make sure that I make myself perfectly clear about my role as to what I, I'm looking for, what I expect. Okay, without going into a lot of details. I took my time over the past month to read and digest the email. I'm gonna summarize this here. The email that you sent to Mayor Gardner on September the fifth. Not only that, but you made inclusive of the. Human resource, um, director, Mrs. Nicole, uh, Mrs. Cohen of Washington and also Attorney Shepherd. Okay, but I wanna be cris- uh, uh, crystal clear. Mr. President, I make no apologies for my role in government. I was elected to ensure that operations, policies and procedures and budgets, contracts and the town laws are implemented and followed to the law. I would never ever change the manner in which I respond to my constituents. I have one goal and that goal is to make sure that my constituents receive exceptional customer service from their government. I wanna wish that I could say that. They receive that from you and your team. Your reference and my reference of this issue, two incidents, the issue about the plumbing. Problem at a home and resident where a resident, I was trying to conquer. I needed contacting you on my cell phone. And, uh, identifying that particular individual. Then an off duty employee, Mr. Dominique, also spoken to you on my phone. After a few minutes, the line wasn't calling. I left the property. I believe the contractor's site, on site was, uh, brown plumbing. Um, and I find that this action is not interfering, which you stated in your correspondence to me. But in administrative functions or operations, by standing by and being concerned to check on a, uh, resident as a councilperson. In review of this synopsis, there is no interference with administrative duties because you were notified. Number two, there were no instructions to the off duty employee in any way. Number three, I have the right to be concerned about constituents and report to the appropriate department, which I did, Jim. The second issue that you learned is about Eatonville Police Department. I have not provided any information to determine my cause for disruption or interference with the police department. However, as an elected official, my request for information on Dec- December the fifth, two thousand twenty four. Regarding former employee Eric McIntyre, please be reminded that it's been over thirty days. Now it's over forty five days. I have not received a response as requested. Nor have you provided notification of appropriate department under your leadership to the elected officials regarding employee work status. And actions over a year. In review of this synopsis according to you, because I had asked a question on this subject. This is not considered a disruption or interference with public confidence in our government. The Town of Eatonville Charter specifically gives responsibility of the mayor, the town council and administrative staff. Article one, section one oh five, article two, section two point oh one. Article, the next article under section two point oh three. My response is that you have not provided information to determine that I violated these articles. The charter of the town grant legislative powers to the town council to make policy decisions. And interact laws to the town such as zoning, local laws, decisions, et cetera. The Florida statute further i- uh, enforced the principle of separation of powers and ethical conduct of public officials. The statutes that you referenced do not have anything to do with me. You list a bunch of state statutes that I don't even attempt. To, I won't even attempt to address the issues at hand. It was a good stretch of the imagination. If you feel that you should file a complaint, I ask you to please do so. You're free to do so. Until some competent court can tell you otherwise. Then you should expect me to carry on my usual questioning and demanding answers to individuals and problems. You also are quoted section one twelve point three one three six. Section one six six point oh four one, section one twelve point three eleven. Your, my response, you have not provided detailed information to determine that I violated these statutes. Rightfully according to our charter, elected officials' responsibility and relationship is not. Administration, I do agree. There is nothing in the town charter that states that a duly elected council member is restricted from asking questions. Or demanding accountability from town administrators. This should not be confused with administrative functions such as giving instructions or supervising employees. I do not supervise employees, nor am I a employee of the town. Lastly, please be further informed that your position as C A O should be contingent upon moving this town forward. You answer to the mayor, but I will hold you accountable for your administrative actions. My position as an elected official is to ensure the governmental policies. And services are adhered to efficiently and professionally. It appears that there is a conflict of disparity of not moving forward in prioritizing projects as mentioned. And in a timely manner, but seemingly delayed approximately two years for a logo. Liars untimely, homelessness ordinance that was delayed for several, uh, long period of time. Notification of downtown meeting with school board one hour before the meeting. Code enforcement issues, sidewalks blocked. Oil spill on the phone, unsafe conditions of basketball courts on streets. Creating unnecessary methods for officials to receive public record requests in a timely manner. Not provided financial reports as requested. Poor interpersonal relationships, attendance. Violations of policies and procedures, budget violations, intentional, not providing notices in a timely manner to. Elected officials by the administration, which is a reflection upon your leadership. I don't know if it's done purposely, but it seems to me that it's intentionally not to let us be aware of some things until. It's up on us, the day of, the day before. It's like, nobody likes, whoever it is. The devil doesn't want us to be there. Okay, I say it that way. Okay, so they find any kind of way to not let us know what's going on. Okay, and that's done intentionally. Um, that's my opinion. I could name a few more that you should focus your attention. Or instead of trying to recommend me as an elected official for me doing my job. I do not see these issues being resolved, but creating a force, a set force of problems infused. With choices of your own desire and not for the people of the Town of Eatonville, but rather for yourself. By being insecure in your job or being subject to holding grudges. If you don't think that Eatonville is a good fit for you, where elected officials can question or challenge. Administrative action, then perhaps you should seek employment elsewhere. Sincerely, Wanda D. Rendell. I have nothing else to say. I'm gonna continue to do what I do, and that is represent this town. I took a oath and I intend to do that. Thank you.
Is that your report?
Okay, good evening everyone. Uh, thanks, uh, you know, everybody for coming out, being engaged in town businesses. Uh, pretty important that everybody come out and just see what's going on within the town, you know? I know a lot of people don't take advantage of coming out and see what's going on, but always got a lot of questions. So. I advise anybody that's interested in coming out, if you're looking, um, live. So I advise anybody that's interested in coming out, if you're looking um, live now, it's every um, first Tuesday and third Tuesday. Six thirty workshop, seven thirty meeting. And if you want to come to CRA meeting, that's gonna be on every third Thursday. So I advise anybody that's interested in town business to uh, participate in those days right now. I would also like to just start off with the um, Zora Nails Festival. I know um, Mr. President had spoke about, you know, the logistics of it. And I do um, so to agree with everything that you stated with that, and we definitely need to be in better communication with. I know it's not a town event, but we need to be in better communication from a town perspective with, you know, making sure that council members know exactly what's going on because, you know, it, I'm not gonna get into all the details of that. But um, if we can please be in better communication, we're never having that event. And happy um, Black History Month to everybody. I know it's February now, February fourth is that. One of the shortest months of the month, but uh, of the year, but um, I, I appreciate the Black History Month. And um, you know, um, I definitely look forward to doing a lot of things that involves Black culture and, you know, doing things that's gonna be sustainable for this community, also being the oldest Black municipality in America. Um, I definitely look forward to doing things that's gonna be um, complimentary to everybody. Especially people of color in this community and even the ones that are not of color. So um, you know, happy Black um, History Month to us. I look forward to um, all the different things that are gonna be going on with host down, um, optimism that he's gonna get things done in a timely manner. That way, nobody have to pay anything, right? It won't be penalized to anyone. Um, I know he got a lot of great things that's gonna be going on over there in terms of like just community stuff. Um, and you know, I had an actual talk, you know, a sit down with him, you know, prior to him building that and all the things that he said he's gonna put in there. Uh, maybe mix it, you know, basketball, which is something that we need in this community. We don't have a basketball gym outside of the boys' girls' club, you know? So he's willing to um, let our community um, share that part of um, his um, establishment with um, the whole community. So I, you know, I give him all the kudos in the world for um, being able to do that. And um, I'm looking forward to that building getting built also. To anybody that have death in their own community or anybody that's dealing with death, man, I know we're, you know, having people, you know, passing away at a rapid rate, man. We gotta definitely pray, get on our knees a lot more than we have and hug our kids a little tighter too, you know, because um, I know we didn't speak about it um, during this um, meeting, but I'm speaking about it now with that leash. I don't know where we at with the leash um, on this for the dog, but that's something that we definitely need to push forward with because I know we just recently buried a kid. Um, it, you know, getting mauled in front of your parents, man. And there's nothing you can do about it because you got vicious dogs attacking somebody because they didn't have it on the leash. That's heartbreaking, man. Like, I got kids, I got small kids, man. Uh, I'll probably be dead now because I'm jumping in it. I'm jumping in the fire. But to eliminate that and be appro- you know, being a little bit more proactive about how we do business, man, I think we definitely need to do that sooner than later. Cause I spoke about that last time during this meeting. We don't need to do it tomorrow. We need to do it ASAP. So if we can get something together to make sure that we're passing that um, onus, that'd be great. And um, also I'm excited about just everything that's coming down the pipeline. I know we got a lot of grants out there and as anybody's watching TV now, I'm not sure if it's gonna affect us to the point of, you know, getting all these federal grants. That's, you know, that, that we've already um, pretty much got, but um, hopefully we can move forward with doing all the things that's necessary to uh, continue building this community and making sure that we're successful also. You know what I'm saying? We gotta build for the future, man. We got kids that's gonna be leaders one day, sitting up there in these seats that we're sitting in now. You know, we can't sit here forever, right? So we gotta make sure that we're facilitating and making sure that we're driving. Um, I now to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to um, make sure that our kids, 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 okay? And um, also if I can address this, I didn't get an opportunity to speak to this young man, but I know this has everything to do with um, code enforcement. Um, guy here, my puffing stuff and Walgreens, if you look to your left hand side, I almost wanna go out there and pick it up. That's how bad it is. So if we can address those issues right there, man, and I spoke about it before and I, and I don't wanna keep saying of beating the horse about it, but those are the type of things that need to get done and dealt with. You know, we can't have things like that. And I know I have the cleanup day annually, you know what I'm saying? The first um, Saturday of every June. And we're not waiting in June to pick that up. That's a code enforcement issue.
You talking about Four Rivers.
Four Rivers, yeah. Yeah, Four Rivers. Yeah, it used to be puff.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, in that little, little parking lot right here. So if we can address that, that'd be great. Um, I'm still having some concerns about um, not having sidewalks on the west side. I know I spoke about this. Um, I'm an advocate of, you know, making sure that our kids are safe at all times. And I don't want any fatalities, you know? We haven't had any, thank God. But it's a dangerous road going up and down Kennedy, West Kennedy preferably. Especially when you're going towards Forest City. We have no sidewalks. And I know we've been hearing this, you know, since two thousand nineteen. Uh, we're gonna start a project in two thousand nineteen. It's two thousand twenty-five. You talking about six years later. What are we doing? And I know our administration don't really have a lot to do with that, but I'm gonna put your foot to the fire to make sure that you're addressing whoever it is that need to be addressed to make sure that we're pushing the narrative to get those sidewalks sooner than later, even if they're temporary. I'd rather save a life than sit here and try to save money. You know, lives are more important than money. I can tell you that right now. And I would definitely not wanna see anybody, and I don't see some close encounters down there. And what, what I did, I'm telling you what I did. I did a study on myself. I walked down there and seen how dangerous it was. I said, man, this is extremely dangerous, but you talking about elementary and middle school kids that walk from school daily. Undergrads there trying to prevent from getting hit. So we got a job to do, man. There's left state is in that leader here. We gotta make sure that we're paving the way for the future, for the kids especially. I, my kids walking down that way. I'm telling them right now. I don't want anybody's kids walking down the way. There's no sidewalks, man. So we definitely need to make sure that we're, whatever grants or whatever it is that we can do temporarily um, into Orange County, you know, feel like they wanna push the narrative to come down here and widen the road, which we supposed to been doing since two thousand nineteen. But I say that to say this, man, we, we need to take care of that matter right there with getting them sidewalks um, down there before somebody get hurt. And um, I'm, I'm finished, guys, but listen, I, I, I gotta give kudos to Waste, um, Waste Pro. That's our new um, vendor now for our trash pickup. When I say these guys are sensational, and I'm pretty sure anybody that live in Eatonville can say the same thing, these guys are sensational. When I say they do their job, they do their job. And I won't speak about other people that did it before them, but they do it right. And I love the way they, you know, the professionalism. I speak to them, I talk to them, and they don't leave anything. They don't say, oh, we can't pick that up. Man, these people pick everything up. This company picks everything up. So if you're looking out there, um, um, Waste Pro, man, kudos to you guys, man. I appreciate you guys coming and doing exactly what you say you was gonna do. And um, last but not least, uh, congratulations to uh, Three D Tire for all the success. And um, the Town of Eatonville, you know, they've been around for forty plus years, you know, ever since I've been a kid, you know, been in Eatonville all my life, outside of moving, going to college and coming back, but they've always been um, sensational what they do with the services that they provide for not just our community, but for the outside community as well. You know, it's a very popular um, tire shop, man. And um, Mr. Wiggins, you know, I know you the founder and um, you know, owner of that um, company. Kudos to you and your bro, your, your son. You got three sons that you had a vision on and you named it Three D. Three sons with the same name, well, the same name that start with a D. And um, the vision that you had is, is still alive. You know what I'm saying? But not only just alive, but it's alive in the oldest Black municipality in America. You know what I'm saying? Like I tell people often, man, you don't have to move by the Eatonville to better yourself, you know? You can do it right here, you know? Of course, you gotta go outside, go to school, what have you, but it's so many different things that I wanna, you know, make sure that we're in tune to, especially with this property across the street, man. I'm tired of walking by and riding by every day and there's nothing done. Us as leaders, we gotta have a vision. You know what I'm saying? My vision is, is, is through the roof. When I look at this property over here, you know, not just a host down there. Listen, there's so much more than just that. You know what I'm saying? That we can sit here and um, say that we want, but we gotta put our foot down on the ground. We, we, we gotta put boots on the ground, man. You know, we can talk about everything. You can talk, I can talk, I can say I wanna be a millionaire, but if I ain't putting the work in, like the Bible say, faith without work is dead. So if we ain't doing the work, guess what? We gonna better stand still. Like we are not. We in a fast lane going nowhere. We ain't doing nothing. And like uh, Tony Shropshire said, we have constructed, we did, you know, the inscriber, that's not even nothing that I want. I'm just being honest with you. You know what I'm saying? I need something that's gonna be for the betterment of this community. And that's not for the betterment of this community for wine because we can't afford it. The average income in the Town of Eatonville is twenty-six thousand dollars. That's for the husband and wife. Do the math. And then you building apartments that start off with nineteen hundred a month for one bedroom? No, it's no good for me. I wasn't an advocate of that. I wasn't gonna champion that. But what I will champion is building single family homes, bringing habitat to humanity here for people that can afford in this community. This culture is rich. The Ivo Quarter is rich. It's a gold mine. Black Wall Street. If we do it right. But I just um, wanted to leave you guys with that, man. Love you all, and that's my report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, if possible, can we get with Ms. Mills to have her contact with Mr. Johnson? Figure out what the uh, community of Kelvin Park is doing about that. Uh, Johnson is the president of that community organization down there. Maybe she can get the police and get some type of police down there with that. Also, uh, if it's possible, uh, give this email to Chief. Out in life, the names of the people that taken the uh, golf cart class, because I think that was one of the stipulations. Uh, in order to drive your golf cart, we have to have you, you to take this class and get the certification. I would like all those names if I could, please. Uh, also, uh, instead of prayer, maybe we can change the word to uh, words of affirmation. Uh, in Jesus's name and then have pastors continue to do that. I think we've been going along with this for years, having that and to have it to be changed by uh, that we can change the name and make it happen for us. Uh, one of the major things when I was in high school, you think part of the Marine Corps, one of the things that stood out to me was praise and public reprimanding privately. We have an opportunity up here to be the example for Black communities to have an opportunity to show how we can get along and uh, in a respectful, in a respectful manner. Uh, but I will begin with you, uh, because I'm, I'm not happy right now with legal. And I'll begin with you and then you can sit down and we can have a talk to, see if I'm in the right place alive. But I don't wanna air it out right here, you know, just like we don't wanna do lawsuits. We don't wanna air all that stuff out right here. So I will begin with you and we have a conversation. Uh, if we can, let's keep the Jones family in prayer. I'm a good friend of my brother Courtney Jones. He lost his daughter. Uh, seventeen years old, uh, pray for the Jones family. And uh, in his uh, decision, I mean, not his decision, but in his uh, arrangement of, you know, burying his daughter, which would be at Macedonia at one o'clock, one fifteen. And if we can, Ms. King, I would, uh, maybe get your information for a resolution ahead of time.
Yes.
Uh, for Mr. Johnson, Taya and Courtney Jones and their beloved daughter, Callie. And that's my report.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, there. I'll tell you this, guys, it's a lot of things going on in Town of Eatonville. I did experience something this weekend with the Eaton Bicycle Club fest. Well, they do the bicycle. I don't think it's called Eaton Bicycle Club, but it's, it's a bicycle club in Eatonville. Once, the first Saturday every Monday, they ride to Eatonville. And I took that journey last Saturday. It was pretty fun, you know? So that's something if you wanna ride on the first Saturday, get out, first thing in the morning, six. Oh, I got it about six thirty, but we didn't ride till eight thirty, eight, I mean eight, so it's a fun thing. Thank, that's true. Uh, some, a, um, championist that buys a super ride, so. Um, if you have a light, come out and enjoy that ride that morning. And it was definitely a little energy wake up, so something good to. But thank you everybody for coming out. I don't have much to say. Zora, we're on that there. We'll talk about that later. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, thank you. I went to the pool summit at Atlantic City. A very nice experience. Uh, and it's interesting how the, the pool business is changing its perspective in regards to swimming. That used to be just a, you know, a fun thing to do. Uh, I wanna thank World Council of Mayors and the Historic Black Towns and Settlement for coming here again to do their yearly conference in the town. I wanna thank Mr. Presley and all the staff for all that extra stuff that you do and that you put up with. I think that you're doing a fine job and I appreciate it. Um, if nothing is in writing in a contract, it's just a wish. We've been hit with that before and it's still happening. If someone can give over a million dollars in gifts, they can pay two hundred thousand dollars to the town. Um, look, we, we were just slapped in the face as far as I'm concerned. Attorney Shepherd, thank you for your passion. Thank you for your passion. Um, I rather have a passionate legal that snide remarks from council members. I think that um, we do have a lot to learn. But when legal is on your side and on the side of the townspeople, then I think you sleep better. But when we keep letting things happen to us that we've fought against in the past, lo and behold, I hope everyone drives safely. Thank you for coming out. And with that, I go first. All it's been with the second on the first say I.
All right.
I all host.
Wait, Patrick?
Okay, good to see you again.